I think they had an issue with somebody yesterday. But, I mean, it's not like five years ago. So I think it turned out really well.
Forty.
Hey, how are you?
Good, how are you?
How's he been?
It did go well. I think we're the only people, I mean, I know when they look at us, they're like, oh, yeah. But, you know, I'm a bad grammar. But, you know, mine, I know, you know, I'm a bad grammar.
They turned it out two degrees.
But it's called for Monday morning stuff, right?
So she is very, she's, I mean, I love me. I got a lot of, I got, hey. Her whole man, she can't find her way to make it.
Good morning, everyone. Nine o'clock. Time for folks to comment. We'll start with Fudge Leagons.
Fudge Leagons, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please keep your comments, the five minutes will last, and there's a lot of folks here today. So. Get started.
Good morning, I'm Heather Knibble, an acres owner outside of Trimmer. I'm speaking today on behalf of the Tama County Against Turbines Coalition. Last week, you voted to have Carlton Sammons represent Tama County in a lawsuit, which I am the plaintiff. Since you failed to tell the public anything about the lawsuit, let me explain what it's about. As a concerned lifelong Tama County resident, I am the plaintiff in a petition seeking a declaratory judgment against the Tama County Board of Adjustment in the Iowa District Court in and for Tama County. A declaratory judgment is a binding judgment from the court to determine the rights and the obligations of each party. Specifically, I'm asking for a declar- declaration from the court that the conditional use permits issued by the Board of Adjustment to Salt Creek Wind LLC are illegal and void. That includes the ten limited scope conditional use permits approved on October first, 2020, and also the sixty conditional use, uh, conditional use permits approved on December eighth, 2020. I'm asking the court to have all of them declared as illegal and void. That's because of the matter of law, the Tama County Board of Adjustment lacked the jurisdiction to exercise zoning power over the farmland on which the Salt Creek project was proposed. By approving Salt Creek's applications and conditional use permits, the Board of Adjustment violated Chapter three thirty-five point two of the Iowa Code by giving the Salt Creek project permission to take two thousand six hundred and thirty-eight point two-four acres of prime Tama County farmland out of active production. Iowa Code three thirty-five point two, farm exempts language states, except to the extent required to implement Section three thirty-five point two seven, which permits enactment of agricultural land preservation ordinances. No ordinance adopted under this chapter applies to land, farmhouses, farm barns, farm outbuildings, or other buildings or structures that are primarily adapted by person of nature and area for use for agricultural purposes while so used. Each of the Tama County zoning certificate application forms submitted with the conditional use permit applications clearly stated that the present use of the property was cropland. The present use of the adjacent property was cropland. And the fact is, nearly all of the cropland included within the conditional use permits for the proposed Salt Creek project remains in active rural crop production today. In fact, nothing in the proposed Salt Creek project's application or in the Board of Adjustment's meeting that it suggests that agriculture or rural crop farming has been abandoned by any owners of the cropland. In fact, with the exception of a smu- a few small excavation sites for the concrete mud pads, all of the two thousand six hundred and thirty-eight point two-four acres of cropland in the conditional use permits issued for the proposed Salt Creek project remain in active rural crop production. It's concerning that Tama County's outdated commercial wind ordinance allows an industrial wind turbine to be placed only a thousand feet or two times the turbine height from someone's home. That means a six hundred and fifty-foot tall turbine could be put as little as thirteen hundred feet from someone's home. Turbines should be sited at least two thousand feet or four times the turbine height from the property land. Not simply a home to protect non-participating landowners from having parts of their property enroached on by turbines they didn't sign up for that can create danger zones on the property of others. That's just not right. My family and I live within the footprint of the proposed Salt Creek footprint. In fact, Salt Creek proposes to put at least two huge proposed commercial wind turbines only fifteen hundred feet of my family's rural home. That's not right. My husband and I did not receive notice of Salt Creek's proposed project, nor did other acreowners in the area, and that's not right either. Since wind turbines are seen, heard, and the effects of them can be experienced for dozens of miles, a wind project company should be required to notify everyone that lives in a county of a proposed project plan before anything is permitted by Tama County. That didn't happen in the case of the proposed Salt Creek project. That's one of the many things that needs to change in Tama County's commercial wind energy conversion system ordinance to better protect public health and public safety in highly productive farmland. I commend the citizens of the Tama County zoning board who took the initiative to start the process of researching and updating Tama County's land use ordinances, including the commercial wind and solar ordinances when they met last Monday, September twelve. It is unex-
Your five minutes is up then.
Yep, I just got just the last trade, it'll be quick. Thank you. It is unacceptable for you as supervisors or your insurance attorney Carlton Sammons to tell the zoning commission's citizens or any county staff that they cannot update land use ordinances. Iowa law allows for land use regulations, including commercial wind or solar energy ordinances, to be updated at any time. We as taxpayers are grateful that someone in Tama County government is finally listening to the voices of more than one thousand taxpayers who have been asking you every week to implement a moratorium on any further commercial wind project approval to allow the necessary time to research and update the commercial wind energy ordinance to better protect. So I, let me just read through here then. All right. Want to finish it? Thank you, guys.
I attended that zoning board public meeting September twelfth. Bill, your wife Becky attended too. Perhaps she told you what an outstanding job of implementing the process to update the ordinances these citizens are doing. They are working to objectively respond to the public's call for the past twenty-two weeks to update Tama County's outdated commercial wind ordinance. That ordinance hasn't changed a bit since 2010, despite dramatic changes in wind turbine technology and potential risks. The three members of the zoning commission, and that's a majority of that commission, who launched the ordinance revision process during the September twelfth meeting, are to be commended for their leadership on behalf of the citizens of Tama County. Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm Laura Wilson, I live in Dyersburg. I'm speaking on behalf of myself today. Um, I had a few different topics, so I wrote them down and applied to talk about ones. Um, could you please tell us how many applications you received for that open zoning, um, position that you have the deadline for?
I'm not sure.
Um, do you know who would know that?
Uh, we have it on file, aren't we?
You have the number?
No, I don't, I don't know that I have the numbers in my head, I just have file, I'm not sure.
Oh, we get it for you later or something.
I haven't looked it up for you, I don't think right now. Um, as you do not, never discuss action items during your meetings, um, when and how will you come to a conclusion on who to appoint? And since there are three of you, any two discussing how the topic outside of the meeting is considered a forum, so when and how do you plan to name a permanent Tama County resident to that open position, um, following after fire season's resignation?
I don't want any comment, I don't want it.
Um, have you reviewed any of the applications yet that were received? Or are you going to wait to do that at a later time?
Probably later this time.
Do you have any idea when you might be aiming to appoint somebody? Um, you've said before that you plan to, but do you still intend to start abiding by the law and appoint a woman to the open seat on the zoning board to comply with the gender, uh, gender balance law? Um, I do encourage you to appoint a woman to the open seat on the Tama County zoning commission. There are plenty of qualified women in the county who are ready, willing, able, and qualified to serve, and I know at least a few of them have applied. I also encourage you to follow the Iowa law and take gender balance and gender equity into account in all future appointments that you as supervisors make to Tama County boards and commissions. Taxpayers expect you to comply with applicable laws and how you run our county, starting with, starting now and into the future for the remainder of your terms. If you were to actually publish the fact that you are seeking applicants for consideration for seats on boards and commissions, like through news articles in the Tama, North Tama Telegraph and the Tama Toledo Chronicle, and to advertise openings in the Tama County shopper, you would be increasing the pool of potential candidates by making people aware of the openings. That's important for public transparency. You should also consider getting the word out on social media to reach your younger audiences, like through Facebook page. And as you consider appointing more women to boards and commissions to achieve that greater gender balance and equity, please also take geography into consideration. Um, it appears that many, not all, but many of the appointments you make come from the communities that you throw from, Trimmer, Tama, and Toledo. There are many other towns and rural communities throughout the county, especially in northern and northeast Tama County that are currently underrepresented in your appointments. Please place more focus on attracting, evaluating the qualifications of, and making gender and geography balanced appointments to Tama County boards and commissions. I just want to end by saying that two days ago, I was driving along the twenty-ninth between sixty-three and Duane, when a huge bald eagle flew only about ten feet above my car and right across the front of the roadway. My first thought was how amazing and awesome it was to see it so close, but my next thought immediately went to how those current wind projects planning to build in our county would affect such an amazing animal. I know the effects of industrializing our countryside with turbines will disturb all kinds of animals, and not just those majestic bald eagles. It'll be so sad if we, as a county, allow our farmland and our nature and wildlife to be overrun by such monstrous industrial structures.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments, folks?
Yes, I have one. Um, why didn't you put on the agenda today to adopt a resolution?
Excuse me, the gentleman just stood up right here.
I can see, my apologies. I'll connect.
Plenty of time.
Plenty of time.
Good morning, I'm Andrew Shuck. Uh, my wife and I, uh, we're roughly two, we're, I'm sorry, we're two of the roughly seventeen thousand residents of Tama County, all taken home to the ninth board of supervisors for the thoughtful consideration of the expansion of wind energy into production in Tama County. Your actions in constructing ordinances and guidelines will both protect and bring the benefit of all of the residents of Tama County, not just those on which their farms receive the turbines. Tama County does not have a large financial or economic center on which we can grow. Salt Creek Wind Energy Project will generate close to fifty million dollars of tax revenues into our county over the next thirty years, which is the targeted lifespan of turbines. It will also pay out over forty million dollars to landowners and residents, and at the same time, this money will provide financial stability to the farmers, benefit the schools, benefit the road projects, the infrastructure, and other countywide initiatives, which are important to all seventeen thousand county residents. And most of the residents believe this partnership is in the best interest of our county. Extensive multi-year studies have been done concerning numerous issues such as back habitat, raptor nesting, shadow littering, and emergency management signal interference. Projects are in compliance with federal, state, and local regulations and ordinances, as well as FAA and environmental regulations of all types. On that note, I'd like to point out that if you have gotten a new license plate the last couple of years, you've noticed on your license plate is a silhouette of a silo, any barn, any wind turbine at the top of your plate. That's because Iowa is the second largest producer of wind energy across the nation. We should encourage that and continue that movement. As we sit here comfortably today, there are droughts in China, Western Africa, two-thirds of the European continent, New England, and the western one-third of the United States. Natural gas, petroleum, and coal pour point nine one, two point one three, and two point two three pounds of CO2 respectively into our air for every kilowatt hour of energy that is produced. This does not happen with wind turbines. Renewables such as wind turbines and solar do not release emissions that dilute the air in the water. We owe it to the next generation to produce clean energy. It should be a guarantee of all. And with our current ordinances in place, permits should be granted for the construction of these wind farms as proposed by Salt Creek. Farmers will have control over the use of their own land. Farmers will have economic stability. Taxpayers will benefit. County residents will see new monies for projects. Schools will see tax money. The restaurants and hotels will see new customers for the many months during construction. We will be able to say that Tama County did their part in producing clean energy for our nation. I urge the board to approve permits to forward the Salt Creek wind projects and look with consideration upon any future proposals for wind and solar activity in the county.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, real quick one. Why didn't you put on the agenda today to adopt a resolution to agree to livestream all Tama County public meetings? As citizens, we've been asking you to do this for months. Those requests started in the spring when we were planting. Now it's fall, it's harvest time. We've had more than enough time to get live streaming of meetings set up. Will you actually put it on your agenda next week to adopt a resolution and take the necessary steps to livestream all Tama County public meetings? That's yes or no? Or, okay, don't care. So what's the status of getting microphones in this meeting room so that everyone can be heard? It's difficult back there, we have a whole house. Probably for safety reasons, we don't need fire crew today. So, we need to hear, we need to be able to see if the farmer wants to be harvesting this year. Maybe he wants to watch the meeting, he doesn't have time to take off. We owe it, you owe it to the citizens of this county, the hardworking farmers, to get, make this happen. I mean, it's not that difficult, guys. Do we have any update? We're still working on it? I mean, Larry said, last week you said you're working on it. How long is it gonna take?
We don't have any microphone, maybe didn't hear you.
Oh.
I got a smile on my face.
Hey, bring your own chair next week, because we're out. If you can't afford anymore chairs, we don't.
I know we're looking into it, but I don't know what's, what's been hap- happened, if anything's been done.
If not, can we move it to a larger room that has microphones?
I know we're looking into it, okay?
Okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate that. The courthouse worked really well when we were there in June, could we use that room?
Uh, we're gonna continue to use this room. Any other comments? Let's do people back, Steve?
I'd like to speak briefly, I'm not a professional paper. And I, uh, first of all, I was born here in Paris. I wear a beard, I'm married to this one man here. I'm not a big opponent or proponent against windmills. I believe it is a right for every citizen to do whatever they want on their farm. Uh, my farm and family, since the eighteen fifties, we've been doing it our way. I want to keep it that way. I believe that if you want a turbine on your farm, fine. I don't know the logistics of it, the law, I'm not big into that part. Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Hushaw, Hushaw, covered a lot of bases that I wanted to cover. I think that we need to realize we need to progress in the world, United States especially. What do you want? Do you want a nuclear plant to be built out here in Tama County? That's what a full set of materials would be available. I'd rather have turbines than a nuclear plant. Another thing I want to bring up is that I feel that, uh, people are getting pulled too extreme on things. I don't see a problem with the turbines. I've talked to people who live around them, they seem to notice. Do they make noise? Do they bother? No. I see in the horizon of my farm, I don't have a problem with it. When I look to the north of my farm, there's nothing but foreign beings. So is a turbine out there, at least there's something to look at. I don't see where it serves the ground. It's good for the county, as he was saying earlier, Mr. Hushaw. I think it's important that we, we progress. We need electricity, we got electric cars coming. We're gonna have to beat those. A lot of comments were, well, none of this electricity is gonna stay in Tama County. We produce millions of bottles of corn, where does that corn go? Where does it go? Somebody say here, in Tama County.
We burn it in our farms.
They're going out so it's, yes, a lot of this electricity is out so it's, it's a way of income, it's a way of life. We gotta adapt to new ways of living. My grandfather got pissed off because, my friend, a dealer bought out a tractor with rubber tires. He was mad as hell, he said, I don't want you to unload that thing, you're gonna compad my soil. We still wanna run steel-wheeled tractors. We have to progress. Okay, you don't like it. I, like I said, I, I could care less whether we have wind turbines or not. But, we need them, we need solar fans. I don't put them on my buildings because economics is not because of anything else. I need to cut costs. I want to keep my farm going for the next generation of the town. Simple logistics, we just have to adapt. I know some of you don't like it, and if you have had their negative thoughts, you're never gonna like it. At first, I did like that you had turbines. I definitely used to do that, I don't think it's a big deal anymore. I think everybody just needs to relax and let each individual farm do what they want, because that's our lot of people. And then other things, we start setting up And another thing, if we start setting up low chlorine, it's adverse because if you set a residence on a wind turbine, what's next? We can't put up big cars because they're too noisy, too big a cow minds, they're noisy and dusty. You know, that almost got passed on the federal level that does control things. It was very close to passing before people realized it was impossible. We need to look at everything, aren't we? I think that's about all I got to say.
Steve? Any other comments?
I'd just like to say, we all talk about how the wind turbine went up and they're still doing it, we're progressing and everything like that. But I invite everybody here to drive down by Marango and see where they decommissioned them, and that's just, all these turbines are laying there because there's nothing. How do you get them out of commission when they break up? What are you doing? You know, they don't use fossil fuels to run and everything like that, but how are we gonna tear these down? Where are we gonna put, where are we gonna decompose them? I invite everybody to drive down by Marango and see all these turbines, that they're trying to figure out what they're gonna do with the unused ones, the broken ones. And that, it's, you need to be able to back.
It may be the farmer's responsibility to take down those turbines.
Right, and so, that's what I'm saying, I mean, it's already, the future is great going forward, but when something happens, what do we do with what we have here? That hasn't been proposed yet, so you're talking about landfills, you don't wanna undo the beaded land and everything like that, and the turbines up aren't doing that. But when they're decommissioned, what's that future?
That was just a list of all the deals, anything else?
The unbilions.
I'd like to say something, I'm Carolyn E. Duff's from Geneseo Township, and just listening to a couple of these gentlemen talk. First of all, we can't do anything we want with our farms. I farm, I have a three hundred acre farm, I farm, I raise five acres of vegetables for markets in Waterloo. So first of all, you think this isn't gonna hurt anything, well, I am outside all the time, I'm gonna be hearing this all the time, seeing it. I have cattle. I don't know how that's gonna work, I've heard stories, you know, I don't even wanna think about that. But the government does control what we do out here. There, there is set aside, there's water, we can't do whatever we want with our water, we've gotta be careful. The government does control a lot of different things, and so you're saying, we can do whatever we want with our land. Well, no, we really can't do whatever we want with our land, I don't know where you're coming up with that. That's not the way it is. I mean, we can plant what we want, that sort of thing, but it isn't that simple then. You know, because when you put up a turbine, that does affect, I don't know if you realize, they're so tall. They're not short anymore, you're talking about windmills, they're not windmills anymore, they're not little windmills you have on your farm, they're huge. And you're gonna see them all over, you're gonna hear them, we're talking about, it doesn't matter about eagles, well, what does matter then? You know, I want my kids to come back to my farm, I already had a kid that's in Minnesota, would have maybe moved here, there is a place for sale, Larry knows about it, maybe would have moved, but there might be a turbine there, so didn't move here. You know, so that's affecting things, folks. And, you know, I don't think I'm extreme, but when you put those big things up, that's gonna, it's gonna be permanent for a lifetime. If I put one up on my farm and something would happen, I wouldn't have a million dollars or whatever to take it down. You know, we're talking a huge thing, and I just think we really need to be looking at this, this is not as simple as just do whatever you want with your farm.
Thanks, I'm looking at about three more minutes, and there was somebody else that wanted to say something.
Yeah, about the, more or less the efficiency of like the turbines, these things are pretty much, they're, they're kinda proposed to be this green, perfect, super efficient form of energy, they're not. And the capacity factor, you go on energy dot gov, the capacity factor of nuclear is like in the nineties, like ninety-seven, ninety, I don't really know, my phone's stuck here, but like ninety-seven percent, wind is like in the thirties. I mean, wood, we can more efficiently get energy out of wood than we can out of a wind turbine. Because wood is in like sixty-four percent, something in that nature, and solar is less than that. And the thing is, just because it's, when it's running there and spinning and you can't see any greenhouse gases, you have to refine all the materials that go into that. You have to forge it, you have to form it, you have to weld it, you have to, I mean, everything, every winding, every bit of wire in that thing has to be made somehow. It takes electricity, it takes energy to do all of that. And another thing is, we need to pay attention to people who have done this, i.e. California, who is all for this, one hundred percent on the freight train already go for this stuff, and now they banned it. They don't want nothing to do with it. You look over in the European countries, some of these European countries have all been for this stuff, and now they're hitting the brakes on it, because it's not working like they thought it would. You know, and I, I think we're gonna end up in the same position that they are in, and we're gonna, it's too late. You know, I mean, this stuff, you know, like Carolyn, so this isn't just like a little turbine on the farm, this is changing the whole landscape, the whole county. This is, I mean, it's a, it's a big deal, this isn't something we should just take lightly and pass it through, I mean, this is fifty, I mean, my kids, my grandkids are gonna be out of high school by the time this thing is over with. So, this isn't something to take lightly, and I don't, I just, and then another thing is too, there's studies, I don't, again, I don't have a site because I don't have the phone with me, but that this does decrease property value, so yes, I understand you should do what you want with your property to an extent. I can't put a hog building right next to somebody's house. You know, if you go next to a city, you can't put a hog building there. Okay, well, if you wanna play the land rights thing, you should go put a hog building wherever you please. Well, you can't, because you can't affect somebody else's rights. I can't trample over your rights, I can't trample over your rights, can't trample over your rights. If I, if I put a turbine or hog building or anything next to your property, it takes your property value down, I'm infringing on your rights. And that's what's gonna happen here, and you're not doing that on just one person. This is, this is countywide, I mean, this is a big problem.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for comments, got one more, quick comment.
I, yeah, I just wanted to read one sentence.
So you've got about one minute, so at least did it.
It'll take about one minute. The open meeting law requires that any communication between or among a quorum of a public body on any matter within its jurisdiction must be conducted during a notice meeting. And last week, I think there was talk after the meeting, and there was a, somebody was asked to be removed from the, from the room, and I don't think that was necessary. They shouldn't, we shouldn't have been talking at a quorum at the end of the meeting, after the end of the meeting is finished. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for all your comments, really appreciate it. All right, well, let's call me, Gorder. Is there motion approved last week's votes? Is there a second? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Go's day. Motion carried. Hey, well, I can't let you sneak in. Hey, well, I'm a big guy, who's staying up on me? What do you got, folks?
I got two utility permits. The first one is Iowa Regional Utilities, they're boring underneath the rock road up north of Gladwater Water Service. And the other is a permit for Tama County for running fiber optic out, fiber optic is being run out to the shop and out to the conservation. This is a permit for that. Just got to be ready for their own purposes. Just they like it, still like it. Okay, other than that, we have the two forty-seven project, we've still got another couple miles of shoulder to do, the second length of it. Just the one lane for another couple miles, they're up near the bridge at the moment, they've gotta go down to E twenty-seven on the west side, and that should be completed, shoulder, still even at the line is painted.
It's up there, it's very nice.
It is nice. Something nice.
About third of it was.
Oh, and it's got some structure to it now. Today's the day that we're gonna be mostly out hauling rock and blading roads. We've got, we've been doing a culvert replacement on H Avenue south of the Crystal Cemetery, that should be winding down. It was a little bit bigger, but it's maybe down the avenue today, sorry. Do you have anything for me, though?
H Avenue's pretty bushy.
Blade should be out this week.
Since we've got some rain.
Yes.
I've heard some chatter about the same bridge, a hundred and ten street east of Kewett.
Okay. No, we're good.
Quick question. Between ninety-six sixty-three and Toledo, are they still gonna, they like took out sections and went all the way down, just bad spots, are they still gonna come back and asphalt it, or are they just doing those little? Because I don't see any activity now that was here. You know if they're gonna do the full?
My understanding is they're gonna be paving, they're gonna be putting asphalt from Toledo up to ninety-six.
Yeah, you know when that's supposed to happen?
I know their plan originally was they were going to finish that east-west section of sixty-three, and then they're gonna go work on Marshall County, had some projects, and they're gonna come back and do, and then do us.
Okay, because they came back for like a week, a week and a half, and they just took sections where they, you know, shut down a couple one lanes at a time, but now they're gone, yeah, did patchwork, yep, and now they're gone, so I didn't know if they were gonna come back and pull overlay, I don't see any signs or nothing, so.
I'm gonna guess that there's still quite a bit of construction season left for asphalt. They can still do it when it gets colder.
Okay.
Provided you're not doing real thin lifts of asphalt. My guess is they're putting four or five inches of asphalt on it, if there's enough thickness there, that there's enough heat to lay in camp, they should be fine to go, they'll go well in dog, you can lay in to go back there.
Okay, but it's still, okay.
That's my assumption. I hope so, I noticed that there'd be a patchwork that they did. It's not the best patches I've ever seen, but I think they did it with the assumption that it's gonna be covered up the other day.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
But I don't know that, that's my assumption.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to thank you for putting the oil on P Avenue and the speed limit, since not everybody abides by the speed limit with the oil, it's very nice.
The speed limit gives the sheriff's office a tool to use to help control safety.
But the oil is just huge at this point.
Down some car just placed down, and that was paid for by the DOT.
Right.
And thank you for widening our little corner also.
We put a little third in there.
Yeah, that was nice.
Anything else for a while? Final thank you.
Thank you. You too.
Woo-hoo. Okay, got more, the insurance thing for you to sign, this.
Health insurance.
The health insurance, yeah, and, um.
Broker for that is Skip Lord.
Very well, associates. So. Oh, we've got a lot to do.
Wow, I didn't see that.
Yeah, we can, if you want, I'll pick them up after a while. The other thing I dropped off was the insurance notification, so I just got this in the mail, it says that the second building, we're gonna have to move everybody out before when fourteen R two should be. So.
All right. Anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, is there a motion to approve the claims? Thank you, is there a second?
Oh, something.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Go's name? Carrie.
Good morning, how are you today?
Morning, Jim. You good? We got you on nine forty-five, Jim.
Okay.
Okay. I gotta work for you.
Sure.
In the meantime, I'd like to make a comment on that.
Sure.
Last week, at the end of the meeting, after the meeting, the three of us were here, and the S and D, and he was talking.
I can't agree very well.
Tammy was talking to us after the meeting last week.
Yes, yes.
She was telling us when the mandatory trading dates were for our harvest, as required by Heartland Insurance Risk Pool. There's nothing wrong with that. We could be all in the same, same place at the same time for hearing information, gathering information, there's nothing wrong with that. Courts in Iowa kind of pretty much decided that a ministerial meeting, which means a social meeting, or even a meeting where you're, example, I don't take association counties, when they have their meetings twice a year, there could be as many as three hundred supervisors in same room at same time. The key is, if you have a discussion and determine how we're gonna vote at that meeting, then you have a problem. But when you come down and meet somebody on the sidewalk, one of them don't have to go across the street just because of that vote circulate. In fact, here's a quote. The difference between a ministerial gathering and one that involves deliberation appears to be, whether the members are gathering information or discussing options. So there you have it.
Thanks, Mark. Well, Jim, it's pretty close to nine forty-five.
Thanks, Dan.
You bet.
Members of the Board of Supervisors, my name is Jim Rome, that's R O A N, like the star of the. Uh that's R O A N, like the Starbury Rome Horse. And I'm uh chairman of the board of directors of Tama County Abstract Company. It's a title company uh here in Toledo that serves Tama, Tama County. We've been in business since nineteen forty-seven is when we established the abstract. My senior partner, Dr. Mike Mickelson, and his partner Ellis Dickens started that abstract company. So we're still in business today, we service uh Tama County and the real estate transactions that take place in Tama County for the transfer of property. And uh it's done in Iowa by abstracts. And uh just as a sidebar, I would mention to the board that for quite a number of years, we have stored the old probate records from Tama County uh in the upstairs of the abstract company building. We have two rooms up there, they used to be apartments, and now we have the old probate records up there. We all realize that the uh clerk of the district court for Tama County, that's now a state office, and they're building some new storage units at the courthouse. That they're going to take some or all of those probate records from the abstract office back over to the courthouse. And they had talked about doing that sometime this fall. I just wanted to make the board of supervisors aware of the fact that they're doing that because those are Tama County records. We were happy to have those stored all of those years, that's been no problem for us. And if they still want to use, uh leave some of the old records there, they're more than welcome to do that. We just wanted to mention that to the board of supervisors.
All right, thank you Jim.
I was uh, I met with uh your board of supervisors on April the eleventh of this year. And at that time, uh I made an arrangement with the board to purchase the tax sale certificate on the property that's next to the abstract company building. Uh earlier this year, on a Sunday morning, uh that older building next to the abstract company building collapsed. And so we had to do something to protect the abstract company building and the surrounding properties. So the city of Toledo declared an emergency. They hired Dan Hatch from uh Dyzer to come down and demolish that old building. And when they did, that, that our building, we have actually two buildings there for the abstract office, that goes very vulnerable to uh further damage. So we had a structural engineer come in and take a look at that building and the wall that was left there and the stairway. That's the way you get to the upstairs where the probate records are stored. And the uh structural engineer from Des Moines who had done the work on the Weeding Theater, uh he said that that wall could be saved, so that's what we proceeded to try to do. So on April the eleventh, we met with your board and we, and the abstract company paid seven hundred and thirty-one dollars for an assignment of the tax certificate. We then uh hired that Sean Heightman, attorney here in Toledo, and he published a notice of right of redemption from tax sale uh on the thirteenth of that month. And uh that term has now expired, it's three months. So we're down now to where we're gonna have to make a decision as to what we're going to do with the wall and the stairway. It's a joint stairway that was shared by that building and by the abstract company building. On uh September the eighth, I met with my board of directors and asked for their guidance as to what we should do. And they said if we could work out uh an arrangement and a compromise with the county on the unpaid taxes, and if we can work out a compromise with the city of Toledo on the demolition cost of the old building, then they authorized me to proceed with uh saving the wall, saving the stairway. And so we have uh an estimate from, from Dunn uh Custom Masonry LLC and to repair that wall. And it's eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and three cents. Gonna cost you all money to repair the wall. We'd like to repair the wall, and when the wall has been repaired, then we would like to do a mural on that wall depicting uh some of the history of Tama County, including the old Tama County Jail, the courthouse, the Weeding Theater, part of railroads, uh museums that we have in the northern part of the county that the county has supported through the years. And we'd like to put a nice mural up there and save that wall, save the stairway, and uh protect that property and get that property back on the tax roll. So Tama County Abstract Company would end up owning the lot where that building was that we demolished. We would own the wall, we would own the stairway. And then that lot and the wall and half of the stairway could go back on the tax laws. That's our plan. Now, what I'm asking you is if we could compromise the unpaid taxes and if we can do that and work out an arrangement with the city, which I think we can, uh then uh I would have our attorney uh work on getting a tax sale deed from the treasurer of Tama County.
Treasury of Tama County is right there behind you. I wonder if you have him come down.
Hi.
They said she had red. And I have two girls that have red.
As I say, don't you have gold doctor?
One's a lawyer and I didn't bring her with me.
Amanda, you, you're up.
Cause if she gets a hold of you, you might end up in jail.
Oh, we don't comment so far.
What's that?
Amanda, you have any comments so far about this?
And Amanda was not feeling well when I stopped to see her last week.
I was not.
So I talked with Gail and uh.
Yeah, cause I know she talked to you about the special assessment going to the city for that, so.
Yes.
Yep.
And the, the city has filed a special assessment against that property. But I think that we worked out an arrangement with them that will make some payment to the city, but they will release that lien, so.
So how would you use that, Amanda?
Uh, well, they purchased the tax sale certificate, which was seven fifty-one. Um, there is a total of about eight hundred uh for first half taxes and eight hundred for second half plus some interest that's on there. So that would be, I don't know, a little over two thousand dollars.
Yeah. So Jim, what do you got?
Uh, I'd like to offer you five hundred dollars to compromise that tax, unpaid tax, and get a deed from Tama County and get this property back on the tax.
How much is the tax deed?
Uh, a little over twenty-two hundred with interest and, and the taxes. Just the taxes? It's seven oh nine for the first, excuse me, seven twenty-nine for first and second half, so fourteen, fifty-eight.
What's your deal guys?
It's fourteen against, it seemed like half would be a bad number. He's trying to ignore me now.
I've worked with Larry a long time. I've been involved in a number of projects here in uh Toledo and in Tama County. And we've always gotten great help from the board of supervisors through their economic development department. You've helped the museum in Dyzer, the museum in Trayer, museums in Gladbrook, and you've helped uh projects that we've had here in Toledo, and we thank you a lot for that. But I've always had to kind of compromise things with Larry, so uh, so that's how I say.
So you're ready to do that?
Let's say six hundred dollars.
It's close to nine to the, so it'll be about six seventy-five.
About six fifty.
We need an option here.
Six hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll go ahead. I'll be fine.
Okay, would you gentlemen pass a resolution into that effect?
You will. Larry?
Yep.
Would you like to make that?
Yeah, I guess.
He's a tough customer, yeah. Anyway, yes, uh transfer the, or assign, reassign the tax sale certificate to.
Tama County Abstract Company.
Oh, it, Tama County Abstract Company.
Yes, uh it's a file in the corporation.
And the treasurer will do that when she receives the seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, right. Make a note of that for me with the six hundred.
We gotta record it.
You gotta record it.
Now I'll second that motion.
All right. Do we need roll call over on that one?
No, that was just a motion and a second, so you're okay.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close the day.
And Dan, I just subject to my working it out with the city, they won't meet until a week from tonight. But I've already worked it out with the city attorney and the mayor, so it's a matter of their passing a resolution. And once they've done that, then next Monday, I will authorize our attorney to proceed and meet with uh, with the treasurer.
Fine, that's a good deal for everyone.
It certainly is.
Oh, thank you.
And get that area fixed up, you know.
Still had to worry about that fifty bucks.
Well, well maybe, maybe Jim will take you out of the water some day.
As long as it's below three dollars.
Three dollars.
Does anyone have any questions about uh what we're doing? We're just trying to make the county a better place to live.
Yep.
And I thank you all for your work that you do. And before I uh leave, uh as a citizen of Tama County, I've lived here since nineteen fifty-eight, I came to Toledo to practice law with Mike Mickelson. And I've worked with the citizens of Tama County from all over the county. Uh, a lot from Dyzer because there was an attorney in Dyzer at one time that turned his work over to me. And uh so I've continued to represent people from around Dyzer. Uh but uh I, I've uh worked a lot with the board of supervisors and I thank you for your good work. But I especially want to thank this young gentleman over here who's been a supervisor for like, I think, twenty-seven years. And he's given a lot of time to the citizens of Tama County. And not all jobs are easy, but keep up your good work, okay? Thank you.
Thanks Jim.
Thank you.
Jim?
Yes.
You're the kind of word.
Yes.
You come up here for lunch?
My friend, son.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a twenty-eight E from the state issued driver's license that I need signed. There's no real changes, everything continues as normal, the state.
Re-statement is original to the, to you?
Yes. It's just they want a new signed version, so everything remains the same.
But we've seen it, we've copied it as before.
Yes.
All right. All right, yeah, let's, we'll do the process of authorizing the signature. So, signing the document.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-eight E version with the Iowa DOT.
Okay, is there a second for that?
A second.
Say all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close the day. Motion carried.
It's gonna be in the middle of the document, so is that attached here?
Yeah, there's.
It's the back, or backside?
Backside.
Got it?
Oh, yeah, there you go, there you go, you can sign right there.
So that's, that goes with, that's in back page.
All right.
I got four. Nice thought. See you later. Are you ready?
Yep.
All right.
What do I do?
So Ty is requesting um to purchase the tax sale certificate, uh fourteen dash zero two zero three. Um, this is a lot, the trailer park lot. In Toledo, you purchased a lot?
Yep, I own the trailer park, but this home sits on my park.
So is, is it real estate or is it a mobile home?
It's a mobile home. Yep. And it's been sitting on the park there and taxes haven't been paid since twenty fifteen. The, the county hasn't been getting any money on taxes, so I'd like to make a deal where we can uh get this back into possession of somebody who'll pay the taxes yearly on.
A mobile home, it's, it's not a, a structure?
Well.
Or would it be removed really?
It'll stay there for a while. We're working towards uh building up the infrastructure of the park and getting the park in better shape. But uh, but we're, we're slowly getting there and uh this home will stay there for a few more years and hopefully we can continue to work to get all the homes replaced.
Let's get taxes, what's your approval?
Well, um, uh, you know, for the, since twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-three, the, the first half and the second half are eighty-five dollars per half for a hundred and seventy dollars a year. My proposal is I'll pay the hundred and seventy a year, and I'd like to have all the other fees and, and things dropped and equals fifteen hundred and thirty dollars that I could pay you guys to uh get this in my name and then I'll continue to pay the taxes on yearly schedule. Fifteen hundred and thirty dollars, which would be the, the equivalent of, had, had the taxes been paid on time, I'd be here.
Here, you're not kinda like, you're kinda like, you're so right.
Correct, yeah.
Right, pay the tax, pay the tax, but as far as the waiting, I guess, uh we'll be hopeful, there's no redemption for that and we're worried about it.
What do you mean? If you would, it would still be a ninety-day redemption, it would just hold the county's certificate.
So the best we could do today would be agree to do it. Come back in after ninety days and we'll do it.
Sure.
Agree with.
Yeah.
Cause I don't wanna be taxed and have them, them come back and say, oh, I don't have any taxes. So you see the, that's the reason.
Sure.
But, you don't see any problem.
That'd be fine.
I just mean.
I'll help you, I'll explain how the process works.
Sounds good.
All right. You'd all pay them and then somebody come back and say, oh, it's ours.
Got you.
Yeah.
It's more to protect you, okay? Perfect.
You come back ninety days and we'll get, get done the deal for fifteen thirty.
All right, thank you, appreciate your time.
Thanks, Dylan.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you for calling, Jim.
A loose thing, a loose statement around here.
But their houses. Duck paint.
The duck paint? I don't think there's any ducks being painted yet, but there, there could be, I guess. They're still washing the brick and like that, and they're gonna replace a bunch of brick. I got a total, I think it's six hundred brick to get replaced on the south side where it's spalled and. They need, it needs to be done.
Everything's been out far?
Yes, yes, the two buildings are going to be cleaned up. I do have some information on that. To locate, remember we started that locate what, month ago? I finally got answers back. They actually got, then they called me back last week. Yeah. So I will get it put on the agenda for next week to get it, just so you guys have an idea what the cost is going to be. You guys can do whatever.
Yeah, we answered, I don't get agendas answered.
This is for the U S I C to locate the fiber that we're putting in.
Oh, you finally get it.
Yes, I finally got some. I got to talk to somebody, we'll put it that way.
Okay.
That's a start.
Yeah.
Okay, you got anything else?
Nope. I think you got something for me.
Yeah, warm the room, huh?
Oh, somebody owns a meat locker.
No, you guys say it was always warm before.
I'm bringing my park and we start the cat.
Put some diffusers on, that's what blows that one.
Well, it's probably working better since we had the ducks cleaned last year.
You thought it was funny that it wore along too?
Yeah.
Well. I, I can't believe it. I don't know what they actually got out, but they say it works. Now what? Yes, yes, you have two, two different areas. See, I don't know how it's fluid, I feel. I think that they understand that Tama hasn't been the whole way. Yeah, I don't, I don't know what.
I don't know if there's an exchange, I don't know how it works if something's stuck. Cause I turned it down to the range, seventy-one.
Yeah.
I don't know what, I don't know if anybody's, I don't know how it goes, what it says.
You wonder if that thermostat shouldn't move out to hallway? Is that such a, it's a. Right, right, cause you don't have a sun. It'd be a missed one. And she's not there, she's not.
I don't know if, it's been that way for somewhere.
Other question I did have about insurance was, when we looked at the paperwork, you said you think, except I had highlighted stuff. The elected officials.
Did you check your register to see if it was open or closed?
Which is a big deal because if you're an elected official and you lead, you can keep our insurance whether you made the rule of any, there is no rule of anything. And they omitted that, so I told her we're not turning anything in, signed it, so that, so it should be there. So I kept.
Yeah, I said that, question better than that.
Yeah. Okay, well, take a picture of the senate, Jimmy, so I can at least look at the back up, just see what it says on there and. Yeah, cause we also have to make sure my emergency number, two thousand dollars, it's because they have insurance, other insurance that. I'm not sure how they, how that. Anyway, other than that, seems it's going pretty good.
Good.
Maybe? Yeah. I know the optical piece is going really well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For a change.
Yeah, for a change, they're getting, they're getting paid like within a week.
One more question, you're on.
Yes. Yeah.
What's the deal with this?
Well.
Do you have to do some change on the building?
Okay, so shed B hasn't been touched. Shed B is cabled up. And so from the ratio, so the first aren't, when, when the storm came through, um, the adjuster said that one winter, get them out. Um, so we're going on our third winter, they're still in there. Insurance, um, that's the information from the insurance company, so we're going to have to move them. I don't know where we're going to move them to. Cause that's the ten door shed, so that holds all the equipment. So everybody's got to get out.
No more extension stuff?
There was really not an extension per se.
There was not an extension, really.
It was just for the original first winter.
Okay.
And then, cause I had read through the original contract that was done. And then, I'm sure the second year kind of just happened as well. And then I did talk to Lyle about it. We had a little different opinion from that and now let's do something with the return coming off, so.
So.
Yeah, we're going on. I don't know.
There's a lot of equipment in there.
Yeah, a lot of equipment, there really is.
It's just something I kind of got, I would say maybe it's kind of skimmed over last winter, but. And luckily last winter was in light, you know, it's not, we have a bad weather this year. And there's able to form it up.
That's a good thing.
The building needs to be fixed.
Yeah. Well, we have, we have the money for the building through insurance, um, to repair the building, but so. Yeah, so they're going to have to come out of that. Um, it, it's going on two years now, so we have to end our insurance stuff. I mean, it's, it's over two years. And so it has to be done. Everything has to be completed, we need to have it done. We still have about five buildings we're working on right now, but I think we're making progress. Um, but yeah, that one's the big concern right now and that comes directly from insurance says done. So, yeah.
I'm not a structural guy, but when they said that, I mean, we went over some of the other issues in there, but, you know, I can't determine inside the walls on that. They came and they did that and I said even the first one, I read that, I could get through the first one. And you look at the other shop, which is a few feet to the north of it, that thing is really bad, you know, getting what we're doing now. They'll put through the same very job.
Yeah.
Thanks, Sammy.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. Doug, you're on for ten fifteen, you want to wait a few minutes? Is Mr. Mitchell here?
Yes, he is. He's in the back. You don't want five more minutes, do you? Just get, get it going, get it out of here. We zoning board met week ago, tonight. There were three of us there, myself, Wade Mitchell and Darren Tyson. Unfortunately Craig was planning on coming, Craig Sash, and he texted me at the last minute, he had something come up. We reviewed our Tama County ordinance, kind of item by item. There were about twenty people there that mostly represented against turbines. But as we went through these review items, several questions on a lot of the items. Setback, of course, was one of them. I talked to the Grundy County zoning administrator prior to that meeting. She had said that they just recently met their zoning board and they changed their setback to, for residents to five times the total height of the nearest turbine, that would include the blade height above the turbine when it's at its highest maximum point. So if you wanted, if you were just assuming a five hundred foot tall turbine and you set a hundred and twenty-eight foot blade at six hundred and twenty-eight feet, times five is thirty, one hundred and forty feet, so approximately three fifths, six tenths of a mile away from the nearest residence. The three of us that were there don't all agree on what setback should be. Some of us want, some of us are recommending a setback for property lines in case the farmer wants to build on his property at any time in the future. Instead of just a resident setback, so we've got to work that out. There's, uh, uh, noise. You know, the property lines that I mentioned, the structures, there's a little difference among, amongst us, our opinions on noise. One point I wanted to bring out was Grundy County administrator told me that they changed there so that the landowner that has the turbine on their property at the end of life or decommissioning, if that happens, down the road. The landlord is responsible for that removal of the turbine, not the county. Grundy County did that to protect the county, to put the burden on the landlord if they have the turbine. So that's something we want to consider. And they also.
What would that cost?
That's a good question. I have no idea. It would be very significant. Another thing they mentioned is they, they require an account to be established ahead of time with a dollar amount. I don't have a dollar amount here, I could look into it, find out more, but require the approval from a third party to have a owe a, a situation of irrevocable credit or a cash escrow account ahead of time, started before the turbine is even built, so that down the road when the, if the turbine is, reaches its end of life, then the money is there to take care of decommissioning it. And so it's not the county's responsibility.
Does that include the roads also?
That's how Grundy's is, yes. And ours, I don't believe is that way yet. It should be included, I, I agree with you. Uh, oh, there were, I don't know if I have any other notes that I wanted to bring up. Can you think of anything, Wade?
There are a lot of things that need to be upgraded, a lot of things that need to be upgraded and addressed. You saw the C D C just came out with new recommendations for sound and residential area. And we just need to make sure that we're up to speed with, with what things are and that, that the county is protected. Like Doug said, when, when things are torn down, that escrow account or something isn't enough. And this thing is standing out there, that it isn't the county's responsibility. If you, you can do, I, I believe you should be able to do on your land what you want to do. And if you want to put one up and take responsibility for it, I think you should have the right to do that. But you need to be, take responsibility and that's where, we don't want to have it on just two acres, because if you put it on two acres and then you're left holding the bag, you just walk away from that two acres, it's got to be enough that and it can assume responsibility for what needs to be done at that time and not put it on the other people in the county. But I, I do believe you should have the right to do on your land what you need, what you want to do. Um, and, and how we do that, so it's just like with all buildings and other things that, 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 those things need to be addressed. So it is safe and it does meet C D, C D C's sound requirements. There's, there's a lot of technology going into the sound and infrasound and ultrasound and so on and uh, we need to make sure that we meet all those studies and, and protect the people of our county.
What would you also change in ownership? Pardon? Parcel change of ownership, you were mentioning the owner takes responsibility for decommissioning the turbine, but what about the parcels that are changing ownership all the time?
Well, if you buy, buy one with a turbine on it, you're.
No, so I mean, so farmer puts one up, re-up, whatever, then he sells, then it's a change. Then they buy a new owner.
If, if the escrow pound didn't add up and they're, but when we're talking about eight percent inflation and things like that, what, what, what you put in that escrow account today, there's a really, really, really good chance that may not be added at the end of the time. And every, one of these turbines, maybe it's only LLC, it doesn't fall back on the parent company, so if that LLC at the end of life, then, then there's, there's responsibility, because those things are sitting up, they're six hundred feet in the air and they're in FAA space and even they have lights maintained on them while they're up there. There, there are expenses and, and, it's just so many, like urban renewal areas and things like that, where the responsibility would fall back on the city or fall back on stuff like that. But that, that's just one, we go through sound and setbacks and flicker, we don't, we, we have nothing in ours that addresses flicker. I, I looked at, was it Wright County?
Worth.
Worth County, that, there is thirty-six pages and it's small print and I didn't see anything in there that I don't think was necessary. And ours is seven pages in big print. I mean, we, we have just so many gaps. And, and it's not a matter of not having a turbine, but that we need to have them done correctly. Because I, um, I feel so traumally about this, that we need to get it, get it done correctly.
Can I ask, in this county right now, uh, change of ownership, are the new potential buyers informed of potential turbines?
I didn't, I didn't, no, see that in Worth County. And that's, when I went through Worth County, as, as I go through some of their sound things, some of them are pretty good, but they, they, there are things that aren't addressed actually the way I think they need to be addressed uh, in Worth County either, I don't think it's, it's, and like tearing down the protection of the roads when things are torn down. We have some language protecting the roads and so the county doesn't have the expense of fixing the roads on construction, but on, on removal, some of that needs to be, uh, addressed on that side too.
Thank you, Wade.
And, uh, so it, it, it isn't just a matter of adopting Worth County or, or Grundy County, we need to make a Tama County ordinance.
Something else we discussed was putting some teeth into the compliance, if there's non-compliance, we should have some type of punishment line or something. We have, we don't know what that should be yet either, but we, we need to have more meetings to discuss these things and that's why we recommended, we had a motion that was passed unanimously to put a six month moratorium to give us time for the zoning board to hear from both sides, so that we've got some time to put together a better Tama County ordinance for wind and industrial wind and industrial solar. We have a meeting scheduled for October third, that will be our next meeting. We're hoping we can show up, it's a busy time of year for farmers, but we'd like to get this thing moving and get it done as soon as possible.
I think a point that you just said is industrial, I mean, the gentleman behind you said you have them on his book, that's not industrial.
Right, right. We don't have a problem with that. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you. All right, is there anything else?
I don't have anything else, has anybody else had anything they'd like to bring up or comment?
Darren, anything on the, uh, outer free blade, the fill removal? I'm not Jim. I know it's getting too late this year or they might do it through winter, they, you know, get in there. I don't want to talk to you, but. Anything else, folks?
I don't, any more information on whether there might be solar turbines out there at the Tama County website? You know, that's in the, in the book, right? Versus redoing the lake?
I don't do anything, nope. Anybody else have anything else? Okay, I'll adjourn you at ten twenty-one.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I don't expect it to. The thing is, you know, if I'm gonna hit, we have reasons, I would say, it's a toll, we don't, we have a public hearing scheduled, because we need to come up with a change. And it's heaven set. Well, I agree with that. Yes. We'll start making changes. And then once we get through our, aside, this is a change, we want to make. And if we prove it, then we, then we. Request a public hearing. Then we can come up with a super, I'd say, well, we, we've proved all our change. It's new.